July 30th. No, no, the August. What is this?
Fourteenth.
Welcome to the August 14th meeting of the Milton Planning Board. This is probably our third meeting of the fiscal year. And we're going to introduce ourselves going around the table. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman.
Emily Ennis, member.
Brian Furze, member.
Emily Martin, new admin assistant to the planning department.
Bill Clark, planning director.
Michael Kelly, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
And we welcome our new administrative assistant. It has been a while, but we have been awaiting this day with some anticipation. So the minutes, we've discussed the minutes. The minutes, Emily is going to be working on the minutes. And we anticipate in future meetings approving many minutes. But nothing today. We're going to meet again on August 28th, September 3rd, September 4th, September 11th, and September 25th.
So that's, it was September 1, 11th?
September 3rd. September 4th.
I don't get it.
You don't get it? Well, you will.
Please elaborate.
All right. September 3rd is what?
Joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on Housing Production Plan.
Thanks.
Fourth, big meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to do the highly anticipated section of our meeting called Citizen Speak, where we hear from citizens who wish to address the Board on matters of interest to the Board, or matters of relevance to the Board, or of matters of other matters. We generally like them, yes.
If no one wants to speak, I'll just say, it's meeting today.
We haven't given them a chance yet. But I mean, we've got a lot of people back there. And I'm going to now ask them, which of you citizens would like to speak? Okay. No citizens. What, you've got something for us?
I'm passing on a copy of an article from today's Boston Herald. And it's rather what Ned Copeland was proposing a month ago. But anyways, he anticipated the city, I guess.
Well, let's take a look and see what it says.
Basically, what Ned wanted to do was simplification of the small business items before the planning board, or before these ZBA.
All right. We'll look into this and see if the city of Boston is comparable to Milton. Now, we're going to do a plan. And a plan that is said not to require subdivision approval for a division of property at 7 and 15 West Side Road. And do we have a presenter? Mr. McCarthy, are you a presenter? Welcome. I should caution you that you're being recorded.
This is a simple land swap. Mr. Needham, who was at 7, is not here. But effectively, what we're doing is improving usability of both lots. Taking a small parcel in the back of 15, which is on the left-hand side, you can see there's formerly a kind of a squared-out corral there that is both an eyesore and kind of limits our ability to use that back piece. Taking that from Mr. Needham, from Paul and Virginia Needham on 7 West Side, and giving them a kind of a piece of land on the left-hand side of their lot. So it really has two benefits. It improves usability of our backyard. We plan to put a garage there at some time in the future. And also gives them kind of a bigger, not necessarily frontage, because frontage is maintained, but also gives them a wider yard. In terms of conformity, we have maintained, we're in Area B, we have maintained the frontage of 100 feet. Both lots are in excess of 20,000 square feet. There's, for lack of a better term, an 80, 75% rule. If you're going to do a little jagging like we did down here in the middle, you can only do that to 20% of the width of the lot. You must maintain that 80% of the width of the lot for 75% of the width of the lot. So effectively, on a 100-foot lot, you can only come in 20 feet. And you have to maintain that 80 feet for at least 75, which this plan does as well.
Well, nice. Questions from the Board? We saw this last time, it seems to me, Bill.
We did. I put it in your packet for this time.
All right. Well, why don't we authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan on behalf of the Board as not requiring subdivision approval?
Some of it.
Good discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, congratulations. Well done.
I actually have a question for Mr. McCarthy. Does anybody else use that driveway on the left-hand side?
No.
Just you?
Just me.
Okay.
The driveway is, and you can see it's, there's a right-of-way up the left-hand side.
I just happen to have another application sitting on my desk for you, and I'm trying to figure out.
The one for the circular drive?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll deal with that separately.
Yes.
You get the Mylar, give it to me, and I'll sign it.
I will. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have a decision to sign. The Curry College decision.
Are we meeting on the 4th? Okay. So it's not out here?
Yes.
Okay.
I was asking right before you.
So I will sign a copy and send it over to you, Ed. While we're signing, you can, you guys can read it and see if it's changed.
If we have any changes. That would change the whole thing.
Want me to read it for the sake of Mr. Kernan, who's not here?
What?
Do you want me to read it for the sake of Mr. Kernan, who's not here?
We're not live.
I know. But he'll get it maybe before he hears this.
Okay.
Scenic Roads Stonewall Alteration Approval for Curry College. Dear Mr. O'Connell, on Thursday, July 10th and 30th, a public hearing was held by the Planning Board in accordance with the town's Scenic Roads Bylaw, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15(c). As a result of the information provided and presented at the hearing, you are hereby authorized to close the openings in the existing field stone wall fronting 1,000 and 1,016 Brush Hill Road. The wall shall be closed with stones similar in size and kind so as to create a seamless bond. The gatepost stones defining the current driveway openings will be relocated for use as stone benches. The mortar color will, the mortar will be colored to match the existing wall. The exposed mortar joints will be kept to a similar exposure typical in the adjacent walls. As a general matter, the Planning Board would like to see appropriate stone wall repairs to Curry College's Brush Hill Road stone walls, such as in places where trees have rotted out, car accidents have displaced stones, and the wall is just in need of repair. The closing and repairs will match the images submitted with your application of June 30th, 2014. Disauthorization for alteration of field stone wall only and does not allow any trees outside of the field stone wall to be cut or disturbed. Authorization to make such improvements to the wall is contingent upon outcome being commensurate or better than the present condition. Sincerely, Milton Planning Board.
Did you just need the one copy signed?
No.
Or do you need three?
Three.
All right. I'll sign this one.
Three?
We have to give one to the clerk, one to the.
Okay, fine.
One to the.
Ryan, I think I was saying. Around mine.
The person. And one for the file.
And I just corrected the missing B on these two copies?
Thank you.
Alex.
Okay.
Yep.
The excess copies.
No, I think that we're done.
We've got, this is the third copy here.
This is the third copy.
Alex hasn't signed it yet.
You've done this one.
Yeah. Bill's taken the excess one.
This just needs Mike's signature, and we're done. Okay.
Oh, then two.
No, he's got three.
Oh, I've done two.
I've done three.
I've done three.
Close enough. Okay. Now, the discussion of the setback issue of 36 to 50 Elliott Street.
Yes.
And the discussion is that we think that the mistake that they made of six inches or a foot is not the end of the world.
Correct.
What else do you need to know, Bill?
Do we have to?
There was a question.
More than that, was it? It was like three feet, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was more than a foot.
The corridor of the building at 3650 Elliott Street?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get too close to the front, probably.
It's only about a foot. And they're supposed to be going to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
So do we need to send the ZBA letter?
And we understand what happened.
Yes.
They've made an explanation, and they changed the building around to meet our design criteria, and.
Because of it, it got pushed.
Right. And none of us checked that. We really didn't.
If you looked at, they somehow or another came out like a foot. It's not three feet. I think it's a foot that they're out into your area.
So they're going to the ZBA that hasn't been scheduled yet? Are we going to?
Oh, it's scheduled, and it's, it's, just hasn't happened yet.
Okay. So when is it scheduled for? Do we need to send a letter? Alex have a chair-to-chair conversation? You tell them that we're in agreement? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to do a, that's the end of that discussion.
Do we need to? Well, do we need to do something on that staircase? I remember that coming up that night as well. They put the staircase in incorrectly? Does it, do we need to?
No, staircases don't have to go to the zoning board of appeals.
I think he was just letting us know that it wasn't.
Well, we had had discussion about it, because it differs from the plan you approved.
Right.
It's got to be de minimis.
Okay, fine.
That would what?
That's not going to have a lot of.
Well, I understand that. But have we approved it? I mean, it may be de minimis, but they still, they don't need a public hearing, but they still need us to say it's okay.
Okay.
So have them come in and tell us what they're going to do, or what they've done.
Done, I think.
Yeah, it is done. I think they told us what they were going to do, which was straight. We told them we would go look at it and tell them if it was okay.
Yeah.
Ed, did you look at it?
I did.
How was it?
It looks very straight. I think it looks funny.
We have a report from a subcommittee on stairs. Shall we accept it?
I would make a motion to approve their slate modification of the stairway, as it has been constructed.
All right. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we need to write something up for that?
I don't. Bill? I think it just goes into the minutes.
We'll put it in the minutes.
Emily?
Perfect.
And that's back to Ned.
I can do the best I can.
Make a, make a note of that. Housing, no, the zoning articles.
When are we having our public hearing on them? Have we scheduled that?
We have not. And that was going to be my question to you. When do you want them?
When is the warrant going to press?
Alex and I are going to the warrant committee on the 27th.
So then, if we held the hearing on the 25th, refresh whatever the results of, wait, the 27th of August?
Yes.
You mean you're going to the warrant committee? Oh, well, that's going to be tricky. Yeah, sorry. I was looking ahead. So then, we, we need to have it before the, so that the warrant committee has enough time to come up with their decision before they.
What's for the 11th?
How long is the discussion?
Usually send someone to our hearing, so.
They usually do, yeah.
We should probably do it on.
Ask how long is the agenda on the 4th? Okay.
Do you think we should do it on the 11th, or would the 25th be too, 25th, it'd probably?
25th is going to be too late, yeah.
We've got to do it on the 11th. Okay. But you've, take a look at these things if there are any, oh, and the selectmen are going to co-sponsor the sign articles.
Excellent. That's fantastic.
Yeah, they're going to do the two sign articles and the master plan implementation committee.
Great.
Okay. So take a look at them. If you find anything, I've been, typos can be, can be, but it's all electronic, so there shouldn't be anything. But take a look at them. Okay. The Housing Production Plan. We're going to meet.
Yes, we're going to meet.
I actually sent you updated copies of that in your packet. These were updated as of last Friday.
Oh, okay.
So you'll see it's a August 2014. The original one that you had before was a June of last year.
And what have they done?
We changed the different numbers for the different, with the different dates in mind. We put in a section on things that we have, some of the stuff that we've already done. You'll see that there is a difference in type font, in, it's lighter. If I had sent it to you in color, you would have been able to print it out and seen it in red. The lighter part is that.
Oh, so it's a red line. I see.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
And if you're reading it, you see that it gets lighter in the text itself. That is the red. But it's an awful lot of pages, too, have printed out on inkjet.
Yeah, you can see on page 26, there's a good example of how the text color changes.
Yep. The whole bottom of it is added new.
That's very helpful.
We put in things like, we have a assistant town planner coming on to, you know, address some of the housing needs, the affordable needs. Master plan pieces are in here. We capitalized the housing trust fund. It's in process. I mean, some of these are, you can see it in there. Promote affordable housing and cluster zoning, which we did at last town meeting. We actually state that here. And the rest is just, we did try to update them. We did try to, you know, check on the timeframes for the different recommendations.
So it's probably a good time to read through this again.
Please.
The meeting is with selectmen as well?
Yes.
On the 3rd. So it'll be a joint meeting between us and the Board of Selectmen, and Karen Sonnenberg, the consultant for the Housing Production Plan, will be making a presentation.
Yes.
So, and is it set up as a public hearing? Did you get a chance to check and see if it was required to be a public hearing?
It is not required.
Okay, good. That's what I couldn't remember.
We will have it as a public meeting.
Okay, perfect.
We'll have the selectmen posted. You'll be posted. That's it.
All right. Should be interesting.
Okay. Why don't you update us on the master plan?
All right. So the master plan is having a little bit of public outreach over the summer with the boards that are up in the lobby of the library and of Town Hall. We're switching off boards every week. I have actually had a request from the Chamber of Commerce at their September meeting. They'd like all the boards present so that the members can see them. Yeah, great. It is great. And we're going to be trying to take the boards a couple of other places in September and probably October to drum up some more ability for people to give us public input. The next and final public forum is September 29th at 7:00 PM at the high school. It's a Monday night. The consultants will be presenting the draft plan to the public and asking for input. But before that, the master plan committee will see it first on September 8th, and then the planning board will get the draft plan on September 11th, which will give all of us a chance to comment on it prior to the public forum, so we get first crack at it. Although, obviously, it becomes a public document as soon as the planning board gets it. So, and then, after that, the consultant team and the master plan committee will be at the Celebrate Milton on October 5th, so we can test a few things, get some more input, do some publicizing. Town meeting members, obviously, will have had a month to read it earlier if they pick it up, when the planning board gets it, before the town meeting at the end of October. And then, after that, we'll be making a presentation at town meeting. The consultants will be there to answer questions. And after that, the consultants will pull in the last of the public input, any changes that have come through, and what they've talked to the public about through September and October, and issue the final plan. So I will be looking for your comments during the month of September. So when you get it, please take a good, hard look at it, because September and early October is when we will get a chance to say, yes, we like this, no, we don't like this, or we need more information here. That's where we are.
All right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Now, if we go back a couple of years, this has to do with 131 Elliott Street.
Ah, yes.
Ah, yes. A couple of years ago, we were proceeding along with a plant unit proposal, an application for a planned unit development at 131 Elliott Street. And we were getting pretty close, pretty close to approving the plan. But we took a vote and denied it because there were a number of outstanding issues.
And if I can just jump in, I think it's important that people understand that what we denied was the original application, and not the various iterations that had come through during the process, because we were asked to vote on the original application.
Right. Well, it was, it was not entirely clear what we were voting on, but.
I think the final request was.
But the original application of, in any event, we had discussed this over the course of about a year, and had numerous public hearings, and we're getting very close. And a couple of the issues, major issues, were that there was some concern about the bulk of the building on Central Avenue. There was some concern about whether or not the building was of a proper height. And there was some concern as to whether or not the ground floor could be considered a basement. And it did seem at the time, when we denied it, that these were matters that could be addressed. And I think that we sort of thought that we would be seeing the applicant again. But time dragged on, and last summer came. And Senator Joyce, who, as we all are aware, has gotten the state to put a great deal of money into our business areas, was very concerned that nothing seemed to be happening with respect to 131 Elliott Street, which is the site of the abandoned or unused Hendry's Ice Cream Factory. And its redevelopment is generally considered the linchpin of redevelopment and revitalization of the Central Avenue area. So last year, we got together a group involving the chairman of the selectmen, Dennis, and me, and Brian, and Jerry Conley, the principal of the developer. And we brought in neighborhood representatives. We consulted with Cheryl Togias, who did some wonderful work, which I will describe. And we, the idea was to get a deal together by which the Conleys could go ahead with their mixed-use development that we had been discussing at length for the prior year. But we understood that there were outstanding issues. And they were addressed quite well by taking the entire building and moving it 10 feet further back on the site, because the setback, the bulk issue, was that the upper floors should be set back. But it was thought that why not set the whole building back? And then, with the extra space on the ground floor, Cheryl came up with some sketches, which you can see in some attachments, which are available. Sketches of making a passageway along the front of the building down to the T-stop, and to incorporating the T-stop into a, into part of the public space around the building. And the passageway would go alongside the commercial areas of the building, and past the doors entering the parking area, then past another door for pedestrians, which would have two display windows on either side. And it, it pulled this area together significantly better than what was there before. And it looked like, it looked like we had a go a year ago. But the, the problem came when the selectmen and the Conleys couldn't agree on transfer of the town land. And you may recall that the town owns a little 7,000-foot parcel on the corner of the trolley tracks in Central Avenue, which was necessary for this particular development. And not having it, and not being able to reach an agreement for the Conleys to secure it, basically, kept the deal from happening last year. And then, the time on appraisal that had been secured ran out, and the matter went back into hibernation for a bit. But Senator Joyce waited a decent interval before he came back. And in the meantime, the owner of the property had applied to construct a 40B development of 58 units, I believe, with no commercial, leaving the town's portion out. Strange-looking, strange-looking development, and not a, not a thing of beauty, and probably not a, well, in my view, it wasn't going to do anything for the business district. It was, other than perhaps add some congestion, it would add some affordable housing, but so would the mixed-use development. So the hearings on the 40B development have started. And the first one was concluded last month, and it was continued until September, when, Bill? September 15th? September 20th? Sometime in late September. So Senator Joyce, what?
29th.
29th.
Not 29th.
30th.
Yeah, it was the 30th.
The 30th. Oh, I remember that discussion now.
Yeah.
Okay. So the 40B development is, the proposal for a 40B development is a live issue. And Senator Joyce got Jerry Conley, me, and the chairman of the selectmen, Katie Conlin, together, and said, do you think the mixed-use development can be put back on track? And there were issues, but I think that after discussion, we addressed the issue. And the first issue had to do with the planning board. And the Conleys said, you know, we spent so long and so many meetings, and it didn't And the Conley said, "You know, we spent so long and so many meetings, and it didn't seem like it was ever going to end." And I said, "Well, what we can do is put together a proposed decision on the special permit, which would be attached to an application for a special permit. And you would be basically applying for the special permit attached to the application." And once it was submitted, then it would be advertised, there'd be a public hearing, and then the board would vote on the proposal, on the proposed special permit. And the board could make changes, but the need for some speed will become apparent because the... Not only is the hearing on the 40B proposal going to occur at the end of September, but there is an agreement for the building to be torn down. When bill? By?
The end of September.
By the... Also by the end of September. And I think everyone recognizes that having the Conleys tear down their portion of the building and having the town tear down its portion of the building would complicate matters and probably significantly add to expense, not only because the town has to pay prevailing wages and has to do a number of other things, which a private demolition would not entail. So if the town's land could be transferred to the Conleys before the demolition date, then the Conleys could take down the whole building. And that would save some money. Obviously, there was a problem since the time had run out on selling the building to the Conleys a year before. There was a problem with selling it to them. But Senator Joyce worked his magic with the legislature and produced a bill, which is now a law, which authorizes the selectmen to sell the land for a fair price determined by the selectmen to someone who would build a mixed-use development on the parcel. So the Conleys, if they bought it, would have to build a mixed-use development. They have a problem with the planning board dragging these things out in a terminally. And they would want some closure. They would want to know that they, in fact, if they buy this property, they want to know that they can, in fact, build a mixed-use development on it because it's going to cost them dough to tear down the building.
Question.
Yes.
When the board of selectmen wrote this bill, did they add the provision that was in the original zoning that the land could not be sold without a special permit from the planning board?
I think that that was in it. It basically said it can't be used except for a development.
So it's effectively the same thing.
It's effectively the same thing. It's restricted to use for a mixed-use development under zoning.
Legislation.
Legislation.
Yeah.
And the selectmen would have to be proceeding under the legislation if they were to sell it to the Conleys because they otherwise wouldn't have any authorization to do so.
So it's consistent with the town meeting vote?
No, it's consistent. So if... You can see the... The Conleys don't want to buy the land unless they have a special permit. Obviously, a special permit, us granting a special permit if the Conleys don't buy the land is, what, it would be a nullity because obviously, I mean, if you read the proposed permit, there's a condition that they, in fact, own the land.
I did read the...
But so in order to get the Conleys a final permit, the... Before they have to tear down the building, we would need to have a hearing on September 4th, then vote any changes, if there were any, on September 4th, have them insert it on the 5th, and file it on the 5th, and then file it with the clerk. And then 20 days later, which would be the 25th, it would be final. And in the meantime, the selectmen have to reach agreement with the Conleys for transfer of the town land. So that's the deal, the hopeful deal.
They want the decision on the special permit before they purchase the land, not before...
Well, I can do it concurrently, but they don't want a... They don't want a... You know, they end up in court. They want a clean special permit.
So they're going to submit an application that meets the requirements of the zoning for the types of documents that need to be in the application, and then obviously the zoning for what they're actually building, with waivers, potentially with waivers, which we have the authority to grant?
Yeah. I mean, it would...
So we'll get all the plans we need to have. We'll need to have all the elevations we need to have.
What you've got, there is a document.
Those additional documents?
The attachments and the additional documents are the documents.
This is the application.
The application, you should have gotten separately. Do you have the application? No.
Yes. Well, we've got the special permit.
That's the permit. That would be attached to it, but there is...
We got an email with the application. Wait, hang on. Nope, I lie. Here it is. It was attached to that.
Okay. And there are other parts of that.
It's on the back of the special permit, the one...
Got it.
There are other parts?
You got an email that looked like that.
Like that?
Yes.
Which had the first two pages.
Right.
Right.
And so this list of documents here...
You have the one that says, "Statement in support of the application for special permit and site plan approval."
That's what she's got there.
The only pages I didn't get you in that yellow folder are the application itself.
Right. That single page.
Because I'm waiting for signature. I do have the supportive one.
Okay.
And then we go directly to the proposed... Nope, there's a...
Oh, the proposed...
Yep, that one.
Yep. Yeah, I read it last night.
And then there are the attachments, which are these, that you do not have right now.
So we need those.
And then you have those.
Okay. So those attachments that you're holding now are these?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. Something through here gone. There's something missing.
Right.
Okay.
But I think that when he sent out the documents electronically, he said the attachments are too big.
Right.
Otherwise, we would have...
But we will get those...
Yes. Thirteen megabytes, and the firewall is only...
When can she have a copy?
Yeah.
Fabulous. Because...
Get the other members some copies.
I will.
Emily, put that in your things to do.
I already have that down to print out.
We need to say, "Emily, put that in your things to do." You have to look at the right Emily. Just make sure you're looking at the right Emily here. You're going to get us confused. Yeah, exactly.
Well, I...
Because I do have some things to do.
I once had a crew coach who was cross-eyed, and it was difficult.
We don't have to see anything, so.
So the reason I'm asking this is if you remember the last time we talked about it, I said that we need to have a technical review prior to the public hearing.
Right.
So what I want to do is I want to make sure that in this folder now, I have all the information I need for that technical review.
I hope that you do.
Bill, is that correct?
We hope that you do.
Okay.
We know that you are a stickler for public review, though, so in any event...
So what I'm saying, Alex, is I will now... If this is what I need to do, the technical review, I will work with Bill to make sure that the technical review is done in time for the hearing on the 4th, so we have that information done. I will commit to doing that.
All right.
If I have all the information that's needed.
I think that this is fine.
Okay.
But bear in mind that if we can't get this done, the technical review and writing the decision and this discussion tonight, all will have been for nothing.
I'm not doing the technical review for nothing, so I'll be interested to hear what the other members say. But if we go forward with this, I will commit to having it done so you can review it for the 4th.
Okay. So we've already said that the other members will get the hard copies of the additional information that's missing.
You're going to... Yeah. You're going to get the hard copies of the extra...
Is that now the plans that you just gave Emily?
Sorry, that's not the right application.
This... What this... We would advertise this beginning a week from today, and then the next week, and then the 4th. So there will be plenty of time for technical reviews and substantive reviews, which is, do we think this plan is a plan that should be approved? Because if it isn't approved, it seems to me that it is reasonably likely that there will be a 40B development with a tooth missing and that the town will spend a ton of money tearing down its part of the building and get left with a lot that likely would contain a one-story building, convenience store, whatever. It would not likely be anything that the Urban Land Institute would approve of.
I don't know what that's...
And as you may remember, the Urban Land Institute also has spent a great deal of time on this site. So you know, we are under a significant time constraint if we are going to make this work.
So then one more question, and then I'll stop asking questions, at least for a little while. I am assuming that what you would like us to do is to review the proposed, this draft special permit and get comments to you well before the 4th.
I think that that would be fine. I think that what you really need to do is decide whether or not you like what's proposed. And we're going to go out, we being a sort of group of people. We're going to go out and we're going to talk to the public and ask what they want. I mean, if they don't want this, then, you know, that's that. In my view, this is so much better than the 40B proposal. And it is so much better for the neighbors, for the business district, for traffic in the town, for parking in the town, and for the town in general, that I think that we should bend over backwards to see if we can get it done. That's what I think. But...
Just, I have a question that's... I like what you're saying, and I agree wholeheartedly, but I can't help but ask, if they were to proceed with a 40B, the developer would have no interest in buying the piece of land from the town?
Well, they can't because the legislation that would permit that says that they have to do a mixed-use development.
So that legislation is in place right now?
It's the law.
So the town can't sell it for any other reason?
No. No.
And can they not modify... They can't modify the 40B application?
And here we have the chair of the selectmen, who perhaps can come up, and we can ask pertinent questions.
If the...
Would you like to come up, Katie? And we can ask you pertinent questions?
If you'd like. I thought I was just... I was planning to just come in and listen to your discussion.
Well, you see, our discussion, I ran through our... What we've been doing. And we were getting into... I indicated my view that the mixed-use development was... I can't say infinitely better, but it is just significantly better than the 40B proposal, which would likely be the alternative.
If you have an application, maybe giving this, asking them to do this.
And so Bill said this application has not yet been signed, so it's not yet been formally submitted. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when would the applicant make the decision to submit it?
Well, I've asked the applicant to make the decision by Monday.
Okay.
But the applicant can make the decision by... We can put the ad in for next Thursday, even without a decision, and then just pull it, which I think we'll do. And I would like to get the board to agree to defer the question of a filing fee until, at the very least, we have an application that's been filed.
We had discussed that at a previous meeting. Yep.
Are we agreeable to deferring a filing fee and afterwards permitting filing without the fee and defer that matter to a later date?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So we're agreeable to that. Everyone nodded.
We did.
Everyone's nodding. Okay.
What is the fee?
The fee is about $6,000.
Okay.
They paid $9,000, and I don't have that file here. They paid $9,000 for the special permit in 2010, 2011. They didn't pay for site plan approval at that time. There is a... The fee would be the same today, so it's the same-sized building, so it would still be, I think it's 9,600 bucks.
The... Katie, the disappointing part of our meeting tonight, well, the exciting part of it is that we have Frank reporting on what's happening. The unexciting part is that we are being only recorded and not broadcast at the moment.
That's why I came up. I turned on my TV, and you weren't on, so I wanted to hear your discussion.
And I mentioned our meetings with Senator Joyce, and that we all are agreed that what we're looking for, what we're working for, is going to be good for the town. So we hope to kick this can into the court of the selectmen. But we're all going to be working at the same time because we want something done either by the 4th, which is when we plan to take a vote, or by the 25th, which is when a decision could become final of September. And of course, the demolition is scheduled for the 29th.
So are we all comfortable with the process? Is everybody...
Well, I guess my... As far as the process goes, I think Emily's been asking a lot of good questions. I think that, from the standpoint, that there is absolutely no opportunity here for an appeal that would allow this process to survive. So I think we need to be careful not to take this effort on without making sure we don't have any technicality issues that will make it an appealable decision very easily. And then I guess my second question is, Alex, you referenced some conversations with the neighborhood. I think part of the dragging on of the public process was the public hearings. So I would love to hear that there's some comfort level that the neighborhood is going to find it to be a project.
I would hope that... It's my firm expectation that the neighborhood, when they realize that this is a possibility, will turn out in some force on the 4th to say, "Yes, do it." And I can understand that you have unfortunately missed out on the past three years of...
I didn't miss it. I just didn't sit here. I watched it.
Well, that's good. You're basically up to speed.
Yes.
Can we make sure that we've scheduled something like the Council on Aging for this meeting, so in case the neighborhood does show up in force? It's not a meeting... It's not a meeting that I would want people spilling out into the halls for. So the biggest room that we can get would make sense. Council on Aging rather than here or the.
So a community meeting is what you're saying?
Well, it's a public hearing, but.
Oh, you're saying.
Yeah, but.
You're saying for the.
The room, for the room for the 4th, if we could get the Council on Aging.
Maybe the high school.
So I don't think we need, quite need the high school.
Can we have any discussion of any review that happens between now and the meeting on the 28th?
Absolutely.
So we could discuss it further.
In fact, I'll look at my schedule. If I can get the technical review done before the 28th, I'll try, but.
We'll have this on the, on for the 28th.
Yeah.
It just won't be a public hearing. Absolutely, it can be discussed.
So again, the only thing that everybody is missing, except for Emily, is this set of drawings that you gave Emily.
And I'll give them to one more person. Who wants, Alex has a pair too.
Can't you make another copy for, I mean, not tonight.
I'll leave the room. I'll give somebody else that wants them before you leave the room.
No, I'm just, what I'm getting at is you give it to somebody else, but then a third or fourth party can grab them at a later date? Next week, early the first of the week?
And as soon as you confirm the application has actually been filed, I'll start the review. But it's gonna take a while, so I want to start it before then.
That goes back to Mr. Conley.
Okay.
Emily, will the selectmen be looking at this as a, sort of a, an issue where they can move forward with or without the planning board? In the sense that can they still figure out a way to sell the town land if the 40B is amended to include mixed use? Or if the town land is designated as a business component to be added into the 40B? Is there, is there a way to still have the sale completed without the planning board?
Well, the board would have to discuss that. We haven't had any discussion of that, so I really, you know, can't speak to where we'd be on that issue.
The question is, is there a possibility? I'm not asking whether or not it would happen. But is there, is there a way to have it happen, or is the?
Town meeting.
Now, the 40B, if he amended the 40B to included a commercial use, then the town could sell the land to be, to a mixed-use development. That's what you're asking, right?
I don't think so.
No, that's my question.
Not under the special legislation.
I think it's a mixed-use development under zoning, but.
Okay.
Okay, that was my question.
Your question was about the legislation. The legislation is only for mixed use, under the zoning.
Under the zoning, okay.
So this legislation becomes just null and void if he goes ahead with the 40B?
No, it's still the law, but.
But it's of no use anymore.
Well, they could sell it to somebody else who does a small mixed-use building.
Well, no, they can't because there's no mixed use. If they can't sell to the Conleys, they can't sell under this legislation.
This names the Conleys.
What?
That's not the legislation.
That's not, this isn't the legislation?
No, that is a proposed special permit.
Did you draft it, Alex?
I did. And the reason I did was that it made sense for me to draft it because if the Conleys, if I said to the Conleys, why don't you have your lawyer go write a special permit? It would have been a lot different. I mean, this is the permit that I would have written on the basis of what I knew when I wrote it. And obviously, you know, the public hearing can change my mind. But this is what I would have considered a reasonable public hearing on the basis of what's going on to date. And I say that, you know, after the new public hearing, I might change my mind.
Do we still have a page set up for 131 Elliott Street on the website?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be a bad idea to put this up so that people can review it prior to the public hearing? I think, I think the public hearing would be a lot more efficient that way. If you're looking to do it at one night and people have had a chance to read this, I think that might make it easier for them to offer their comments because they'll know what their specifically comments are on.
We can put up the whole application.
Yeah, let's definitely do that.
We could do that as well.
But this is, this is the major part of the application because this is the permit they want, maybe.
The developers already reviewed this and said they're happy with this?
The developer hasn't.
Hasn't?
Okay, that was gonna be my next question.
That's what we're waiting to, waiting to determine.
Okay.
But the developer, as I say, wants to know that if they get the land, they've got the permit. And, you know, if they get the permit, that they're going to be able to get the land. So it's all tied up together. And we are reasonably hopeful that this is going to have a very happy outcome.
So essentially, what you're saying is, we're going to get to review this, we're going to get to discuss it on the 28th. We'll hold a public hearing on the 4th. It'll be put up so that the public has a chance to review it. They can bring their comments to the meeting on the 4th.
And there will be a neighborhood meeting.
There'll be, there will be a neighborhood meeting? Has that been confirmed? Okay. Bill and I'll talk together about doing the technical review. And if you don't have it for the 28th, you will have it in time to review it before the 4th, so that'll be taken care of. We have the public hearing, we have our discussion after closing the public hearing, we make any changes, we vote on those changes.
On the 4th.
On the 4th. I don't have an issue with that, actually. As long as we can be sure that everything has been submitted the way it's been, it should be submitted, that it meets the technical part of the zoning. I don't have an issue with this process as it's been laid out. I mean, it's faster than usual, but they have already spent a great deal of time in front of us and in front of the public. I don't know if anybody else has any issues about the process.
So they should know by, at the end of the meeting on the 4th, whether they have this permit or not?
That's right. We would want to file it on the 5th, so it would be final on the 25th.
That means somebody would have to make, if there were any changes to this, somebody would have to make them pretty quickly.
If there was going to be an appeal.
Yeah. No, I meant any changes from the meeting on the 4th. If we make changes to this in the meeting on the 4th, those need to be typed up, filed on the 5th.
But it is possible that, you know, it could be a revised draft available then.
Yeah.
Just from comments made.
Yeah.
That's the potential logistical issue.
Change in the year.
We'd have to.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
No, we'll have to.
That's what we were just talking about, is because we'll have to sign it that night if it's gonna be, or first thing in the morning if it's gonna be, you know. If people are willing to do this, I'm willing to go along with it.
Yeah, I think that, for me, knowing that, or hearing that there's a community meeting makes me feel better. Do you, it's not scheduled yet, I assume?
No.
Okay.
So we should know when it's scheduled?
I don't know why I'm looking at you, Katie. I'm sorry.
It'll happen before the 28th or before the 4th.
We'll be working with the, we'll contact the Columbine Cliff Association, Milton Hill Association, and the Revitalization Committee so that we get
Good.
a good cross-section of people from that area.
And all of the abiders as well, just to.
We want to, we want the times to have an article, and Frank, of course, have a big article saying, "Big meeting tonight."
So would you expect that this meeting would happen before we meet again on the 28th?
I would hope so.
It'd be nice to know on the 28th.
That the meeting has already happened.
Public opinion.
I understand. This is a, you know, this is a tight schedule. We'll work again.
Yes. When does school start? Just curious. No, honestly, I'm just curious how this is gonna work.
I don't know anymore.
I think it starts on the 28th.
Starts before Labor Day these days.
There you go.
I don't hear the Wednesdays.
So everyone's still on vacation. It's okay.
Maybe start on Monday or Tuesday.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at 25th to 26th.
So people will be back?
Yeah, they will be back by the 4th.
All right. So with that, what else, Bill, do we need?
That's it.
All right. Well, we're looking forward to some productive negotiations between the selectmen and the Conleys. And we're willing to offer our good offices.
Thank you, Alex. We appreciate that.
And good luck, Katie.
And Katie, has the Board of Selectmen received, or will the Board of Selectmen receive the packet that I saw Bill handing to you?
We'll get it out to everyone, yes.
Okay, good, yeah. Be helpful if you guys have any comments as well.
Yep, we'll do that. We'll solicit comments from everyone. But yes, setting up the neighborhood meeting will be no problem. We'll get, working on that.
Great.
Excellent.
Well, all right. I think that that only leaves the town planners' report for the evening.
Go back to my chair in the back of the room.
I gave you a letter that is revised, about the revised drainage for Mary Webster Lane. Town engineer and DTW director have both reviewed the plans and they're both, they're both fine with it. That's it. We have the copies. If anybody wants to see what the new drainage rigs are or calculations are, we have them. For the rest of what I've done, East Milton Parking Access Study, we had the public meeting on August 7th. It's the pre-25% meeting. We had it over at the Council on Aging. We had, you know, a bit over 30 people at the meeting. It was televised. We got some comments in. We gave a lot of information back about what the project will look like. That's the pre-25. The next meeting will be in September. It will be the 25%, which will be submitted to Mass Department of Transportation. Mass Department of Transportation will hold that hearing. They'll run that hearing. Comments will be taken back, given to Federal Highway, and we'll start the process of a review that goes until early winter, at which point we'll turn in 75%, which takes another four weeks or four to eight weeks of review for it. And then we get the 100%, and we would have construction documents. So we're looking at the start in April for construction. The Hendry's Project, been doing a lot of work on the Unknown Parcel, the demolition of the building, preparing the town's portion of the building and the unknown portion, dealing with the Conservation Commission issues with that project. Actually, that happened Tuesday night. Governor Stotan and State have been working with Polte, dealing with the historic review and the application of Mass Historic, dealing with the wetland issues and the wetland review with Conservation. Polte actually just completed their test borings for ledge on the site to, Monday, Monday. Been dealing with some of the tree removal for access for their boring machine, which, you can go back there now, you can't even see where they went. And they actually, it's like driving a truck through there, but it has tracks. So they did a really good job of not having it look like somebody just ran a bulldozer through the whole thing. Been dealing with the engineering review for the site plans with Polte. Working on the long-term lease for the Yulin Rink. Dealing with the necessary submittals for the annual submittals to DCR. And then helping Alex with the rest of this. Alex has actually put in incredible amounts of time putting all these documents together. I know that Tricia Cahill has typed most of it. I've done a little bit of it, a little bit. I know Emily started putting the backpack, the back half of the packet together today. The attachments, we got scanned in, so that's why I know we'll get them printed out for you. That's enough.
Two questions. One, when are you getting your Assistant Town Planner?
We are interviewing the beginning of next week.
Excellent.
With the first round. We'll hold the second round the beginning of September, so we should have it by middle of September.
And number two, Mass Works grants to the application period will be coming up in September. Is there anything that we can tie to East Milton or any other, but East Milton might be a good one, to apply for some funds so that while we're doing the work on East Milton, we can also maybe get a couple of other things done?
In East Milton, so?
Yeah, we've been doing a lot on the other side. We've gotten Mass Works money there, but we haven't. No, I was wondering if Bill could suggest some, you know. I haven't, I wasn't able to go to the meeting on the 7th because I had to work, so. But I think that's something we ought to be thinking about, is what other improvements could we be doing to tie, tie onto that?
I know we just, we're not even through with the last Mass Works grant. I'm not sure they're going to give us two open Mass Work grants.
Well, that's another one, that's another question out there. I know they've been focusing on housing recently as well, but it's something to keep in mind.
And I know that we had, we had issues with the process, so we're extending it out an extra year.
Okay. Then you're right, this is probably not the right year.
Give us two grants at the same time, for the same program.
Yeah.
We still, we still have work being done on Elliott Street. I believe we just did the hot-topping on High Street. They put down new sidewalks, new walls. And they still haven't completed the, some of the changes down in the central, Central Lab Business District. There's another change happening there. We'll have the clock up.
Right. Okay, thanks.
One more time, would you go through the dates again, please, one more?
Okay. We're going to meet on the 28th.
Yep.
We're going to meet on the 3rd, at which point we're going to discuss the housing production plan with the selectmen.
Yep.
On the 4th, we're going to have a public hearing at the Council on Aging beginning probably at 6:45.
If it's available.
If it's available.
What's the subject?
It's going to be 131 Elliott Street.
And I think we should keep that to our only agenda item.
We're going to keep that day fairly clear.
That's the 4th, can we keep going, please?
The 11th, we're going to hear do the zoning articles.
And the master plan.
And the master plan.
Yep.
And we're going to meet on the 25th and we're going to discuss the number of meetings we've recently done.
Any leftover tidbits?
And the 29th. We will have a master plan, a public forum, so. September's going to be a busy month for us.
Just go by every night and see what's going on.
And right.
Bill, some of the stuff has been mixed up a little bit, so if I come in Monday.
Before you leave, I'm gonna straighten you up.
I don't have a housing production plan, I don't have a master plan.
No, there was no, there is no.
You're getting a master plan on the.
There was one, I think.
Your housing production.
Housing production.
Okay, that's all that, that's all that, no, no master plan.
No master plan stuff.
Just the housing production thing.
I have that.
You have to go to the Dropbox.
No, the, he won't get the master plan until the 11th. There is, there is no master plan currently available to have, is what I'm saying.
I give up. I give up.
All right. Now, we've had the report at the town planner. So.
I was gonna let Ed do it.
So.
Ed?
So the 131 Elliott stuff, you could have completely piled that together.
That's what was in just the envelope, that, just the yellow folder I gave you tonight was in. That's why I said, before you leave, I'm gonna put it all together for you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.